I'm going to call me to order. Roll call. Jessica?
Yeah.
Rod?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Ethan?
Here.
Carly?
Here.
Here.
I am also being asked, has been properly noticed in certain places?
Yes.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I declare the presidency to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
Sure, I will. The Mount Horvath area school district, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Moving on to two A's, approval of the agenda.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, seconded by Leah. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Two B is approval of the December 5th Board of Education regular meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes?
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to two C, approval of the December 19, 2022 Board Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Carly. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to three, addressing the board. Three A is our students. How like interested are they?
Well, I'm just so excited to introduce you to an absolutely outstanding young man and comes from a fantastic family here at the middle school. Before I give away all the details, maybe I'll turn it over to Principal Christensen, Associate Principal Hansen, they can kind of brag on our student for a little while. Tell us about Patrick.
All right. Patrick, come on, come on down.
Sorry.
I didn't warn him yet, all these people. I've saved it for him. He's got my field advantage, so we're good. Anyway, this is Patrick Chapel. He is just a fantastic seventh grader in Mrs. Finley's homeroom. And I'm going to read a couple of things that either others share or I just bought it because I've gotten to know him a little bit. While many students have a wonderful thought provoking, have thought provoking ideas, Patrick has taken that to another level by acting on it, particularly with his work to initiate a Black and Indigenous People of Color Alliance earlier this fall. Patrick actually reached out to over 50 middle school staff members, teachers, support staff, kitchen staff, administrators, with the hopes of developing the alliance. And I'll tell you a couple of things if you say. We think this school should have a time for students of color to have a place to discuss how to improve the representation of minorities better, and here's why. We full-heartedly believe that students of color would like the ability to share and have their ideas heard, since we don't see or get a lot of representation from school. Overall, this would make school a better place for people of color. And I can tell you that while the details of this have taken a little time to develop, we continue to support you in that mission. And actually, Patrick had a really great opportunity with some high school students to share his thoughts and ideas when we had a panel of high schoolers, he was our only middle school representative, if he was a vocal one, which was fantastic, to talk a little bit about how we could better respond to accidents of ability and just support historically marginalized students. So a few things from his teacher, and I always, teachers, and I always think this is sort of cool because you really get to know a student because their comments mesh really well with each other. So I would describe him as a quiet peer. He is at times quiet and reserved in class, which allows other students opportunities to think, be heard, or take the lead. He also regularly speaks up when he sees others not taking initiatives. When Patrick is passionate about something, he goes after it. Patrick is a very creative thinker and genuinely enjoys learning. He is friendly, kind, well-liked, and well-respected by his peers. Patrick has an interest in social justice and overall things around the entire world. He's a well-rounded and lovely individual. Patrick is dedicated and attentive, even in algebra with much older eighth graders, which actually is an advanced eighth grade class that he's in as a seventh grader, so shout out for you on that one. He's an excellent leader, always willing to work with anyone or take the lead in such a natural, authentic way. He is an absolute pleasure to be with. Patrick, thank you for making this call.
You brought some amazing people from your family tonight. Can you introduce them for us?
My mom, Stephanie.
My dad, Robert. And my little sister Amelia.
We know it all starts with the family, so thank you so much for all that you've done to help support and nurture your son. We would love to be able to take a picture with mom and dad, sister. Would that be okay? Are any of Patrick's teachers here tonight? We'd love them to be a part of that picture. Could we maybe go out in the hallway and take that picture together? Jessica Aragoni, who's our middle school representative liaison, is also here tonight. We might just take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back, okay?
Thank you so much, kids.
Patty Schaefer.
Patty, come back.
All right, we'll come back to order then and move on to three B, school news. We have a new one to start up.
Yeah, so I have a couple of things for us tonight. I believe right now there's a girls varsity gymnastics meet in the high school against Monroe Grove, and this weekend on January 7th, they have an invitational hosting in town as well. And then the boys varsity basketball and JV basketball teams are playing Monroe on January 5th, and they have invitational at Wannakee on January 7th. Our girls varsity basketball and JV teams are playing against Oregon on January 6th, and the versus Paul River on January 9th. And our boys wrestling team is invitational in Sock Prairie on January 10th.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of bits of news. One, that would hopefully be of interest to our DEPTAS students. This Saturday at DeForest High School, they're competing for district-wide district competition, and the winners of that will go on to Lake Geneva at the end of February. And so I want to extend a note of gratitude to Allison Carroll and the rest of our business education team who helped coordinate for that. It's one of my favorite events to go to every year is to see the kids get all dressed up and present and compete. It's a lot of fun. If you ever get a chance, I encourage you to do that. At 5 o'clock today, all of the applications for the Board of Education positions had closed, and we have two announcements to make. First, I want to extend a note of gratitude to President Rothamer for her years of service on the board. Nine years? My word. We're so grateful for all that you've done and you've absolutely left an impact on this school district in such a positive way. Thank you. And I want to extend a note of congratulations to Jessica Aragoni, who's agreed to throw her name in the hat for another round at the Board of Education. Our general elections take place this April. She and a gentleman by the name of Joel Craven are the two individuals who've completed their applications by the deadline, and so we want to extend a note of gratitude to both those individuals for giving of their time and their talents to our community. Being a board member takes a great deal of work. An example of that is tomorrow night, the board is meeting in partnership with the Village Board, Village of Mount Horvath Board, as part of their ongoing strategic plan to continue to partner together. That meeting will get underway at 5:30. It is open to the public, however, it will be, the agenda's posted online. The notice that I need to give to this body tonight is that that meeting has changed its location. We anticipate another good turnout, and so the community service room at the senior center will be, there will be meeting, God bless you, at 107 North Grove Street. 107 North Grove Street tomorrow night at 5:30. The Village Board has their meeting that begins at 7:00 PM, so please join us by 5:30 tomorrow.
Thank you. Board members, any school news? All right, we will move on to three C, citizens' comments, and I'm actually going to ask Adam to read a little blurb to the crowd tonight regarding citizens' comments, just so I can keep my voice on.
All right. There's a lot of legalese here, so thanks for being patient. Let me stumble through. Public may address the board for policy number 187, public participation at board meetings. All individuals who comment during the public comment period are reminded that the information provided this evening is intended to provide information to the board so that it can fulfill its role. In that vein, all parties are reminded that all information offered be truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject the individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including but not limited to defamation claims. Comments that identify students shall be subject to the Wisconsin Pupil Records Law and FERPA as such student information that is not directory data as designated by the board. For example, individual student behavioral or progress records shall not be discussed in this forum. Comments that identify personnel are subject to the applicable personnel record statutes in section 19.36, Part 10, Wisconsin statute. The board may inform the speaker that his or her comments are not permitted if, in the opinion of the board, it is not subject to release under the above applicable standards.
I also want to remind everybody commenting tonight that to keep their comments to no longer than three minutes, so that everybody who wishes to speak can do that and the full business of the board can be accomplished tonight.
We do. Welcome to Gus Scholes. Good evening, Gus. And if you want to come down, Gus, just in this area here, we have a microphone that can catch you.
I'm all the way to the front.
Gus, thanks for being a part of our facility steering committee. You've done a lot of work in this effort, so thank you.
You bet. Where do you want me?
Just right here.
Okay, and I'll stay well within my two minutes. Just want to say I'm here in support of the negotiation process between the board and the teachers, also as a supporter of the operational referendum. And just want to remind everybody, a big component of that was retaining our quality staff, and in order to do that, we just need to make sure that we are paying a competitive wage. So just like to encourage the board and the representatives of the teachers to negotiate in good faith, make sure we're communicating, and in the spirit of that referendum, make sure that we're retaining that staff. So, thank you.
Ms. Barb Winger, is it Rort?
Rort.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Please come in. We'll make a spot right here.
Okay, my name is Barb Winger Rort, and I am a resident of the district. I voted yes for the referendum because I believe that educators, and I do believe that educators deserve a professional level of compensation. It was my understanding that that would be happening. Who am I and why am I speaking? I'm a teacher in Verona and a former teacher at this middle school. I am a co-president of the BAEA in Verona, and from the standpoint of having recently been included in the new creation of a salary schedule, I can attest to the fact that multiple perspectives are needed in such a complex task. I encourage you to welcome the teachers into the process as you work out the details to create a compensation model that will be attractive to high-quality teachers, and just as importantly, will retain them. At this point, while other districts are welcoming educators into the process, it appears that Mount Horvath is missing an opportunity to bring the stakeholders to the table. It is known as meet and confer, not negotiation, and it is not illegal. Here's why this is important. Without full transparency and communication between the staff administration and the school board, you are potentially missing the perspectives that are needed to make updates to a well-constructed, equitable, and competitive salary schedule. In addition, Mount Horvath's salary schedule needs to be competitive in Dade County and surrounding counties. This year, Verona passed a schedule that will credit teachers with all their years of service. This means experience outside the district, outside the state, and even international teaching. Essentially, they're incentivizing teachers from other districts to leave. You have the advantage right now of a very loyal staff. I know, I worked here, and they are still here. But if you do not work with them, listen to them, and give them a competitive salary, I'm afraid you may lose your best and brightest, and that is not fair to the children of this district. I close with this adage. Smart brains together make the best decisions for all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Humbert. I've been a part of the Mount Horvath community for 33 years. As president of PFLAG Mount Horvath, I've had the pleasure of working with Mount Horvath administrators and teachers over the past five years. And prior to COVID, I volunteered at the PC and then the IC over a certain period. I hope to return some days. I have witnessed the quality of the Mount Horvath staff and feel so lucky to live in a school district with so many outstanding community teachers. And having a high-quality school district impacts the type of community we live in. Our schools truly are the heart and the center of our community. When Steve Salerno presented at our Town of Blue Mounds meeting regarding the reports of the recurring operational referendum, I completely supported this. We need to retain our veteran teachers since they are truly the backbone of our schools. In addition, we need to attract new teachers. For both of these things to be possible, we must be competitive with surrounding school districts. I don't want our district to be a farm team who feeds into other outlying districts that have better compensation packages. I want us to keep our quality staff. That won't be possible if we continue to have one of the lowest salary schedules in the area. And I'd like to see that our teachers could make a fair living without taking on an additional job, and I'd like to see that it's possible for our teachers to afford to live in the district that they are teaching in if they so choose. I know the referendum doesn't go into effect until the next bar league cycle, but there are things that could happen now to show our teachers and staff that they are valued. Our teachers don't feel listened to. It seems having board members at least sit at the negotiating sessions could go a long way in helping them feel like you are listening. I've witnessed the Herculean efforts of our teachers during the pandemic. I have witnessed our teachers coming together to work with administration on passing the referendum. I have seen teachers and administrators work together to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion in our district. This district has teachers and administrators with a history of working together for the good of our children. I would really like to see our administration, teachers, and school board work together now to come up with a plan to fairly compensate our teachers and support staff with permanent competitive salaries and benefits. It would be great to see all folks join together, working from the same side of the table, not from opposite sides of the table. Thank you.
Jill Jonas.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Jill Jonas. I'm one of your older school district residents and taxpayers. Thank you to all of you who dedicate your lives to Mount Horvath School District's children and public education. Over the last few years, public education jobs have been stretched beyond recognition and expectations. International pandemic, school shootings, health care inequities, and statewide politicians continually decreasing financial support for a foundational component of our democracy, public education. Given the circumstances, Mount Horvath schools have handled challenges amazingly well. Credit goes to so many for doing so much, and teachers are a large key component to that success. Unfortunately, Mount Horvath teachers are not appropriately compensated. We just have to look throughout our county and our neighboring county school districts to see that that's true. The desire to hold on to our best teachers was key to the recent referendum passage. I recognize the board has much to consider as you move through this newer teacher negotiation process, an example of you've already adopted this year's budget. But to be fair, negotiating compensation packages and balancing budgets really isn't anything new. Now, as a community, it sure appears that we have an opportunity to move forward, to set up a compensation package over the next few years that teachers deserve. Successful negotiations take a tremendous amount of respectful work and careful listening. I have faith that you will do both. Here's what I ask of the board, and quite frankly, the teachers too. One, please assure that your immediate negotiation strategy significantly improves the teacher compensation package. Two, please continue to work together in good faith, compromising where you can. And three, please assure your long-term negotiations strategy provides as much permanent financial and benefit support as you possibly can. I want us to hang on to the best teachers, not lose them next door, and quite frankly, I want us to hang on to all of the best employees in our school district. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Lyle, and I'm a resident of Mount Horvath, and I have two kids at the high school, higher pressure and a junior. And I just have to say, being in this room has made me really emotional because I feel and I know that we're in the presence of the greatest of our community, the best minds, the most compassionate, the fiercest advocates, and folks who show up and have shown up for my kids and all kids time and time again. And bottom line, that's what this is about. Our teachers showed up for the referendum. They show up for our kids. They literally save lives every day that they reach out to their students, and I feel like they're asking for something that may be complicated but is also really simple, and that's to sit down with them and to listen to them and to talk. And it may not be the way the things that usually go or the procedure or how it usually goes, but I feel like there's a great deal of trust that could be broken here if this isn't repaired right now. So I feel like now is the time to take a step back and see what you can do to meet them. They have done so much more than meet our kids. They go above and beyond, and I know that that is why so many of you are on this board, is because you know that and you see that and you're dedicated to. So I hope that we can bring our most creative minds to figure out a way forward so that we can really, truly acknowledge the greatness that we have in this district. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Elliott Shalgren. I have been in the Mount Horvath School District for 15 years. My husband and I moved here in 2007. We have three kids in the district. Luella's in fourth grade, Harriet's in second, and Fraser in kindergarten. I've also been a teacher for close to 17 years, and I know these conversations are even sticky, but it's something that can happen. I know too, as a village, a district, and a community, we're better together, we're stronger together, and being proactive will help keep us following Amy's age together and doing the right things. I helped personally alongside all these educators get signs in the yard to pass the referendum, and I'm really looking forward to everyone coming together and being able to talk about it. Thanks.
Brittany Schultz.
Hello. My name is Brittany Schultz, and I am a parent in the district, a community member, past MHASD employee, and a teacher in Verona. I'm disappointed to need to be here to support our teachers, having to beg to get a seat at the table, to be a part of the conversation, needing to reach out for help from community members and peers just to feel heard. I said in an email correspondence to Dr. Salerno and the board in October 2020, focus on the voices that have been here the whole time trying to support the teachers of our public school. The quality of our district depends on the quality of our teachers. I said in citizen comments to the school board in 2020, those who have spoken have stated how teachers are incredible, how we are grateful for them, how this is not to be disputed. I don't understand how people can say they're grateful for them but not respect their professional voices. And here we are again, not being willing to hear their professional voices. This past referendum, the district relied on staff support and now isn't respecting them enough to go towards the next step and meet them, to be transparent about how you plan to use those dollars towards staff. In a district 5.8 miles away, I am an educator who makes $10,696 more per year than I would in Mount Horvath. How can you expect to retain teachers when a 10-minute drive can make you an extra $53,480 over five years, almost $107,000 over 10, or $320,800 over your career, at even a Mount Horvath house? Mount Horvath has lost the position of being a destination district. While pay may not be the only reason, it's a reason that's right in front of you to fix right now. I knew heading into the referendum how it would affect me as a staff member of my district because transparent conversations had already happened. Showing the respect to teachers, that you respect them enough to come to the table and discuss, is the smallest acceptable action at this time. Let them be here, speak to each other, give them a spot at this table. Without teachers, none of you would have a spot at this table. Pay them accordingly. Pay them accordingly.
Hi there. My name is Stacy Monster. I have been in the district for 31 years. I also live here. My kids went here. I just, I love this district, I really do. My hope is that the newer teachers in this district will also stick around for a long time and maybe even 30 some years also. That would be cool. But historically, Mount Horvath has been in the middle of the pack, been closer to the bottom sometimes when it comes to pay. And then typically what's happened is, the school board shows up and they bump us back up so that we can get back in there and be competitive. The school board saw fit to put a vote out there whether or not we should exceed the revenue limits with the referendum. Groups of teachers, as mentioned before, worked hard to get that word out and help the referendum get passed. Signs were purchased and put up in yards, postcards were mailed, people were called, and Facebook posts were made. The district also sent flyers out stating that attracting and retaining quality teachers was its number-one priority. The referendum passed, and now you have a chance to really let teachers know how much you value them and all the hard work they put in for our students. My concern is just the way negotiations are progressing, like we've heard from all the other speakers. As you can imagine, I've seen my share of contract negotiations over the years. While there have been years that might have been more heated than others, in my memory, not once has the school board completely shut down the communication right from the Is this the type of district we've become? I think that makes me so sad. When MHEA needs to talk with a hired attorney as a taxpayer, I'm curious who's paying the bill for this attorney? They're not cheap. Why are other boards working with their teachers and the Mount Horvath school board is not? Some of the newly hired staff have asked me if it's been like this between the school board and the teachers, and I've told them no. In the past, we've worked together. It's been a respectful relationship between these two groups. I'd like to see that continue. My guess is this is just simply a communication issue, really. The board has not yet communicated the specifics of why they won't talk with MHEA members. There also needs to be transparency and a plan on how the referendum money will be spent for the next year. If staffing was your number-one priority, then I'm trusting that the school board will make sure a chunk of that money does indeed go to salaries. After all, that is how it was sold to the public in order to get it passed. Let's get back to having an open, respectful relationship between the two groups. We are on the same team, we want the same things. You want excellent teachers. We want to be the excellent teachers that you want. We just want to know that we're treated with respect and that you know that our hard work is valued. If the school board works with teachers, this will continue to be a district where teachers strive to be excellent, and they want to stay and live, maybe even for 30-plus years.
I'm Brooke Rainey. I was hired in 2016. I am a school counselor for the district. I have two children in this district as well. I am a member of MHEA, and in the fall, MHEA surveyed our professional staff, and I wanted to share those results with you. 134 members responded, and this is what they had to say. Out of 134 responses, over 50% stated they work a second job to supplement their income, and around one-third are considering it. About 10% of these staff members that responded donate plasma as a way to supplement their income. Over 85% say that they rely on another source of income to make their ends meet. When asked the question, "Do you consider leaving the Mount Horvath Area School District or a higher-paying district?", almost 60% answered yes. 23% answered consider. Over 80% of respondents stated they have considered leaving this profession. When asked if they could afford to live in Mount Horvath solely based on their income, less than 10% said yes. The comments that staff wrote in this survey are heart-wrenching. We have a group of dedicated, passionate professionals who have to take on other income opportunities just to pay their bills. These are dedicated people here for your kids. We want a seat at the table. That's all we're asking. We want to share these stories with you so you can see where we're coming from. All we're asking for is to meet with some staff, have our MHEA staff members, meet with some school board members, so that we can work collaboratively toward the goal that was set by the board in 2018, to get competitive regional salaries. Thanks.
So it sounds like that's all that we have signed up tonight for public comment. So unless somebody wants to sign up right now, we'll move on with the next. Moving on to four, our personal transactions. For A, there was an agenda. Rod, would you like to join us?
I would, thank you.
We'll move on to four. No transactions, and you were going to retire.
I was, because she's such a lovely individual. I'm referring to Jennifer Rudolph. Jennifer, our LMC specialist over at the Intermediate Center, you'll note her name is in the retirement packets for tonight. Just an absolute delight. The things that she's been able to do for that Intermediate Center library and the children and the staff of that school are legendary. You know, she actually came to us after having gotten her degree in the late, excuse me, the early 1990s, kind of did some other things in her profession and found her way into public education. I always like going through the personnel folder to see evaluations and things because I think this kind of encapsulates just how neat these individuals are and all that they give. Here's what one supervisor wrote. "Jennifer is purposeful in her actions and reflective in her practice. She goes the extra mile to help others and has earned the respect of her students, colleagues, and her administrators. She has established a safe environment for her students and created a very welcoming place for our children and staff." Jennifer is also somebody who did a great deal to help support the overall culture of the Intermediate Center. She was part of the building technology and literacy committees that we had here in the district, and then also did a number of leadership roles while at the Intermediate Center. I know you'll join me in saying congratulations to Jennifer, and really, we look forward to celebrating her and the rest of our retirees this May. So let's get around of applause for Jennifer.
There is an agenda for the board. Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod. Further discussion? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agendas. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out? Motion by Leah, seconded by Rod to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to move to 7A up. It is the interval for the high school baseball team to travel to St. Petersburg, Petersburg, Florida.
Yeah.
That's pretty exciting. Tell us all about it.
Yeah, so I'm Ryan Finley, and I coach for the varsity baseball team, and I've been talking to a few other coaches that I coach against. They've told me about some trips they went to in Florida. Barry Boo, Stockbury, Milton. Three guys I'm very close with, and how much fun they had down here, how great it is for the families, kids who don't ever get to take a spring break trip, get to go down. So it's baseball city in St. Petersburg is the venue, and then they hook us up with umpires' games, practices, teams go to the beach one day, which was really close to St. Petersburg Beach there, go to watch the college baseball game together, try and get away, so you know, spring sport. We start before spring break every year and...
Inside?
Inside, the beautiful weather. I think last year, our weather was probably worse than ever, so it's one of those years like, all right, we got to do this. So looking forward to doing it for next spring of 2024, but get the kids together and head on down and do some team bonding and enjoy some nice weather and get some good baseball on, a lot of good baseball on. So looking forward, see if I can get approval for that so we can help with some fundraising. Estimating, obviously, airfare, haven't looked into it yet, obviously, or whether we take a coach bus, and I think we have to hire two bus drivers, I believe, for the coach bus, and get vans and fly, so it's kind of the logistics, but roughly, they're looking at like $1,000, $1,200 per kid. We'd like to be able to fundraise and help get that number down to hopefully in the $400, $500 range or even more, even lower if we could. So looking for some, get that approved now so we can start getting the logistics behind it and hopefully start doing some planning on that.
High school administration is supportive as the district administration. I want you to know, I lived in Tampa for 10 years. I could be a tour guide if you want.
Yeah, my parents live down in Florida as well, so I get jealous in the spring.
So you're out of the job.
But I get to have the weather down here, yeah.
Such a wonderful idea, your part, thank you.
Yeah, so appreciate it. So yeah, so that's...
Motion to approve.
I'll say that.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jim. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a great trip from back in...
Appreciate it, appreciate it. A young man behind you appreciates a Tinkin' Drew Bratburger over there, so...
We like pictures, PowerPoint presentations.
So, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we will pivot back to our discussion items. 6A is our community member reports, and M, I think buildings and grounds didn't meet as...
Yeah, we did not. December.
All right, so we can move then to Jim, finance.
Yeah, so we met December 12th, and during our time together, we had one donation to consider, $3,000 from the Optimist Club. 100, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, $1,000 was for middle school athletics, $1,000 for middle school athletics, $500 for the music department, and the DECA program for $500. From there, we reviewed our budget calendar, so as we've heard every year together, Scott does a terrific job of putting everything out and has rhyme and reason for doing everything, so we just explained the budget calendar. So not a lot of changes to the budget calendar there. And then we briefly discussed some of the policies, public gifts to schools, and advertising in schools. This is going to be an ongoing conversation that we're going to bring back to the table January 9th is our next conversation.
Any questions for Jim? Excuse me. Thanks, Jim. Now moving on to safety and wellness committee, Jessica.
We met on December 5th. It was actually a joint meeting with the education committee. Started the meeting off with an update from oral mental health, based on overview of their current services, utilization rates, themes, and student needs, and this is the fifth year of the partnership that we have with the community. We also had two guest speakers in addition to the oral mental health, Kent Armisen and Josh Shear for our elementary health curriculum updates. They provided an overview of grade three and five health curriculum, and we were able to do a sugar lab simulation.
I saw, none of us know how much gram weighs, that's what's...
We learned stuff, it was good. Sarah also gave us an update. We talked previously about a possible partnership for FFA between Barnabell and Mount Horvath. They're continuing to have discussions sort of on hold right now until Mount Horvath High School students register their 23, 24 classes. They have another meeting scheduled with Barnabell in February. Sarah also gave us a grading assessment update. They have a grading and assessment task force, and they've developed three different committees, one's for grading scale descriptors, another for baseline understanding survey, and the third one is education communication staff. They, I believe, all met last month, and then we'll start meeting monthly. We also had a safety update. Each school has completed one safety drill per month, and for two of those months, they use the drills to teach safety strategies. A few more updates. Mental health updates, the savers, the district screener that is being used with students in grades four, six, and nine, they're finalizing the dates for that to be administered in 2023. This meeting took place in the beginning of December, so we talked about the equity, the district equity meeting that we had on the 12th. If that is what everybody had a meeting, hand that update. And that was about it. We had some policies on the agenda, but we didn't get to a successful meeting.
Thank you, Jessica. Questions for Jessica? All right. Does all of our community member reports? We'll move on now to 6B, community survey results, so we have some guest stars.
Good evening, board members. Again, I'm pleased to introduce you to a couple of folks who are on the call tonight, names that look very familiar to you. Maybe I'll take my ugly mug off, but I'll have them turn theirs if that's okay. Good evening, Matt Wolford. How are you? Matt and Ryan, both from Bray Architects, helped facilitate our meetings that we had with our community, and we had five or six of them throughout the past fall. And then also a friend to the school district, Dr. Rob DeMuse. Dr. DeMuse is from School Perceptions, and he has produced a document for the board's consideration tonight. Dr. Rob, I've gone ahead and given you access, if you wanted to share the PowerPoint presentation if you'd like, and I think we can all hear you. Yep, very good. I'm going to turn off my microphone, and if someone wants to say something, just let me know, that way we don't have any feedback on the call.
Sounds good, thank you, sir. So this will look very familiar to you. The format is really no different than the...
Please hold.
Your AV card is revoked.
He kept going. Can you hold on, Dr. Rob? I accidentally unplugged you. Just a moment, please.
Do you have his audio fixed? Do you have his audio plugged back?
Yeah, so it was Bluetooth. You can help me out.
Of course I can help you out.
You're always awesome, thank you for taking good care of me. So this is...
Your Bluetooth, I don't have a Mac, but...
Okay, so this isn't here. Here's what I'll do, I'll just try and plug you in and ask him to say something.
Yeah, ask him to say something so we can make sure he's still with us. Yeah, volume's over here. Here, let's do this. Rob, can you say something? Yeah, he's not on.
I might have to log out and come back in.
I think it's something with your output though, because was he coming out of here or is there a speaker?
He was coming up there, yeah.
There is a speaker. There is a speaker.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Technical difficulties. Is this cord going on?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if there's anything with the cord. Is it still popping in over here? Because like at school, if the AV weren't coming on sometimes, it's a cord that's far away.
Of course it is.
You're my guardian angel tonight. Thank you for helping, for helping me here.
Well, of course. I'm interested, so. This is what they're supposed to say. I can't get up there, I'm not that tall. Don't worry, it's just getting cold.
Here we go. Can you hear us now?
Okay.
You saved the day.
No, it's really you.
Thank you. We're back at it.
Alright, thumbs up, there you go. Okay, so like I said, the blue slides are background information. There will be nothing new there. This is exactly what you saw, if you're what you've seen in your survey, whether it's screenshots or whether it's the exact. The gold slides are some of the overall survey information, so things like the survey window, how many respondents and so on. We'll spend most time tonight on the green slides. Those are your results and analysis. And then finally, as always, will be time for questions and those will be great. So, let's launch it. Certainly know who we are at this point. Just reminder of your process, no different than before. Households within the district were mailed a paper survey and then respondents could do one of two things. They could fill out the paper survey and return that directly back to us at School Perceptions for entry. That way confidentiality will maintain. Or take the, take the survey online that they one time used code that you likely saw when you got your survey in the mail. And that was the code that allows you to take the survey once, but only once, so that nobody's voice is louder than anybody else's. So, what have we, what have we learned? Well, your survey wrapped up, as you know, on December 21st and we learned that 1,614 respondents participated. And that is a basically a statistical type similarity based on where you were before. That's only 15 surveys off from where you were in your spring 2022 project with us. So, that was great because your response rate is 28%, which is outstanding. For context, average of the last two years has been about 17 to 17.5%. And even with that average, we still feel very confident in the results we can provide. We were 93.3% correct in November in the midterms and over the last five or six years, we looked at about 94.5% accuracy. And that's with a response rate that's 11% lower than yours. They're outstanding there. You definitely heard the thoughts of your community, so I feel very confident in your data. And the benefits of having more response is your margin of error goes down as well. And you're just a hair plus or minus two and a half percent on your margin of error. Your age, to always ask this question on every single one of our surveys, and the one place I always begin with is the uppermost bar. You're 65 plus. I really wanna make sure that we're hearing from your senior citizen folks because they have dark airport collection attendance. They will be there, they will let you know what they think and they are the most likely to be on a fixed income by nature of very likely being retired. You are overrepresented in your survey group there and that's fantastic. That's what I want to see. I want to see overrepresentation. And you were situated for 4%. 15.2% of your district residents are 65 plus. 19% of your survey takers were 65 plus, I can imagine. We again ask, is your primary residence in the district? And just a reminder here, why do we do this? Because we wanna filter out the people that cannot vote within your, within your district's boundaries. And certainly, you're in a very commutable area. Staff don't necessarily need to live there. Any parents will withdraw into the district. By definition, don't live there. If I own more property, buy over second home. And I, I have a mailbox at that residence. I could get them the survey. But point being, we're gonna strip off the 7% and only focus on the 93% because they have a privilege of voting within your school community. We did want these numbers as your leadership team, so I think it's kind of what you would expect. Overall, the majority of survey takers are approximately six and 10th in the village. But you actually did have representation from every single one of your municipalities, down towards the town of Moscow, second to the bottom down here as well. Next up then, the two pie charts that we always put next to each other. We ask, are you an employee of the district? And do you have children attending school in the district? And the purpose of asking this question is because we want to make sure that parents and staff are taking the survey because they're so connected to the school community. But we also don't want them to be the only people taking a school survey because most people in your community, and any given community for that matter, are not parents or not employees, are not employees. So, what we're seeing here is what we wanna see and because you have a good number of survey respondents, we can also break these groups up just like we did last time with your parents, or excuse me, your staff, your parents and your non-parents, non-staff. Here, if you did want to segregate the data by this measure, we could. The question read, if you do run school age filter, in other words, if your parents, what schools do your children attend? And this wasn't our goal to apply because obviously I couldn't have more than one child enrolled in your schools at one time. Most people who conduct the survey are high school, but again, you did have representation here all the way down across your, across your schools. So, let's get into the red slide, your results and analysis. Just reminder of how this survey was structured, reminded people that two types of referendums that elders can throw out in Wisconsin. What is not regional referendum and what is that appear and then a capital referendum, which is the focus of this particular survey. So, we wanted to provide those definitions. Talk a little bit about how you got to this point and what the purpose of this survey is. Just reminder, nothing new here. That's why I'm going through these slides a bit quicker. This is exactly what was in your survey. Talked a little bit about, wrong, I talked a little bit about some of the issues that the ELC seems in three primary areas. So, school safety and code compliance, the building systems at that particular building and the instructional spaces at that facility. And then talked a little bit about the middle school work that your facilities here committed as well, some of the big ticket items there. And noted that these particular issues are too expensive to be covered in your annual budget and therefore you are investigating a potential capital or facilities referendum. And then we asked the question, would you support the district pursuing a capital, i.e. facilities referendum to address the issues above at this time? And as a reminder, why do we ask this question? Well, it's a couple of purposes. First point being, we really want people to come away from your survey understanding what your needs are. And when a question is there, it slows people down and they're more willing to read what's on that page when there's a question present. So, one purpose. The other purpose is, we want people coming out of the gate, how do people feel? Because if the majority of your folks don't even necessarily want you to pursue or even explore a capital referendum, then we have some thinking to do because I, as a taxpayer of your community, could tell you to pursue or explore sort of how it's gonna fall and that doesn't cost me a nickel. So, here it's kind of telling you, how do I get your yes here? Begin this before people are saying, yeah, sir, you go ahead, you tell me what's up here, please. You tell me what's in the most of this survey and I'll tell you yes or no. So, this is kind of a first hurdle to clear before people are even willing to investigate what it is that you're proposing and how much it's gonna cost them. Your staff and your parents were quite supportive here. Nearly seven in 10 of your staff members were supportive. That's about what I would expect to see in terms of this type of survey. Both seven in 10, a little over seven in 10 of your parents as well were in support of you pursuing something related to facilities. But your non-parents, non-staff, and as a reminder, 75% of your community is located here at Purple. They are very much split. A plurality are saying yes. But right off the gate, about 41% of your non-parents, non-staff are saying, no, we don't want you to pursue a capital or facilities referendum. For context, that is way high. Typically, on this question, you know, I would say it's right around, you know, maybe between 20 to 25% of non-parents, non-staff that will say yes to this. And you're looking at about two times that here right out of the gate. So, that's, that's the person that caught my eye in your data, the height of this purple bar right here. But we did still want to investigate the specific areas of your potential facility work. So, we presented the base plan at first. That was primarily centered on two main projects. So, your base plan to build a school to serve students in early childhood through second grade and talk about some of the big things that is there. Kind of nice schematic for grade that we put into the survey so people could try to see what's going on where. Again, talked a little bit about how this would move it out most of rock a little bit and where things would go and how to use your buildings. Again, that the other part of your base plan, talking about what would happen at the middle school with the schematic there. We reviewed the costs, the total cost of the base plan and wanted to disclose the following specifics. And then we asked the question, would you support that 71.66 million dollar potential capital facility referendum to fund the base plan? And here we are focusing specifically on those residents, those folks that we told. 66% of your staff residents said yes to the, to the base plan. For context here as well, that is lower than what I typically see on a facilities. Well, I guess any, any survey for that matter, be it operations or facilities, but that is a little bit lower than normal. I would say that's probably anywhere between maybe 10 to 20% lower than what I typically see from staff in terms of their support for any given referendum. For your parents, they were actually a little bit higher and that caught my eye as well. Typically, your staff are the most supportive, probably while your parents kind of in the middle and then your non-parents, non-staff probably on the other end of the spectrum. So, again, it caught my eye that, that staff, even though they're supportive, they do seem to have some questions here based on the fact that their support's a little bit lower than what I would normally see. Parents, 67%. And your non-parents, non-staff are a little over 30. 38% of your non-parents, non-staff would support this base plan. Now, similar to what we did in the spring, we wanted to weight that support appropriately based on how big those groups are in the community. So, you heard me say a few minutes ago that your non-parents, non-staff are approximately 75% in your community. So, we weighted their support with a 0.75 weight. And your parents coming in at 67% with a 0.25, 0.25 weight rate brings you to a hair over 45%, in other words, below the 50% threshold that would be needed to pass a facilities referendum in Wisconsin. But as you know, that wasn't the only thing that we had tested. There were several additional projects that we put in front of your survey takers. And those included the pool. Talked a little bit about how, what planning you did to get to this point and showed a couple of example images there. Did this, save this for costs, talked a little bit about the planning you had done, showed an image here. And then finally, your outdoor athletics, disclosed the costs, the background information. This one did not have an image, but same kind of thought in the base plan. We wanted to reiterate how much does this cost in total? Because this is where, you know, people's math, this is what we're gonna see on a ballot. We're gonna see the total cost. But at the end of the day, people are gonna make their decisions off of how much it's gonna cost and then how much money will be there while. So, what did I learn? The question read specifically, would you support expanding the referendum to pay for any additional projects? It can even focus here on residents. So, what I'm seeing is, again, your, your parents are a bit more supportive of all these projects than your staff are. So, again, that's what caught my eye based on the same principle that I mentioned before. But the other thing that catches my eye, second to third thing that catches my eye is you're, you're nearly 50% of non-parents, non-staff who are not interested in supporting any of these additional projects at this time. But I did wanna back up again and then say, well, my, my third thing that caught my eye here is, what, what is this support? You know, maybe, I don't see an overwhelming support for any of these projects, but the pool of what was tested was the most supportive. So, then I thought, well, what if you did move these forward? How much, or what kind of percentage of your community would I expect to support them? The pool had the most support, but less support in the base plan. So, now we're getting well, a little minority here at 43.8% of your community in favor of the pool. Outdoor athletics was the second most favorite at 37.5%. And the gym of those three projects was the third most favorite at 36.3%. So, in summary, what have we learned? We learned that a majority of respondents do not support the base plan as it was described in this survey. Reminder that weighted support was at 45.3%. None of the projects, excuse me, none of the additional projects as well that were tested have a weighted support above 50%. And as you just saw, the highest of the three was about 43.5% or so. So, let me pause there and see what questions or comments you have about this data for us at School Perceptions.
So, Rob, have, have you ever, or could you apply a turnout model to the 75, 25 population model?
I think you've broken, just about, on the one kind of model?
A turnout model. So, so one that, that estimates that weights the 75 portion of the bar and the 25 portion of the bar to turnout.
Yeah, we have done that. It happened this for a couple of years, but we, we've double checked that number after elections with some of our partners. Some of our construction and architecture partners and as they move forward with some of their free survey communications and planning. They purchased the publicly available lower runners and they make cost reference now.
Right.
So, it does seem to be pretty similar to the 25, 75% that we have here. Again, that was a couple of years back, but I wouldn't expect that to change over the last three or four years.
Okay, thanks.
As I think actually, it's probably, the support probably would tend to go down a little bit since most registered voters would skew a little bit older than your median survey takers. And your median survey taker is certainly going to get a good to a bit of appearances now.
That, that was my assumption as well.
Rob, you talked about this when we wrote the survey and I was just curious about your sentiments around the disparity between the general support of the improvements, that first question versus the specific plan? And what kind of variance you saw in the results there? Are you able to read much into that? You know, of yes, we're supportive, but just not of this plan versus other survey results that you see of this time? Or is that standard, standard variance?
Say, say a bit more about what your, the specific question to that.
If I'm seeing, yeah, if I'm seeing, you know, like 77% in favor of doing something and 66% from the same segment in favor of this specific plan, that strikes me as a big disparity. And even five and four on the others, it seemed like we lost a lot of momentum on this specific plan versus the idea of doing something about the problem.
I do. Yeah, I see what you're saying. So, yes, once we start attaching costs and taxes back, it always goes down, no matter what. So, it's a good question. I see where you're going now. So, the, the amount that is declined from this question to the actual specific base plan was not necessarily that much of a surprise to me. In fact, the staff, you know, it's not uncommon for them to go down maybe between 5 and 10%. Non-parents, non-staff, their support drops as well. So, the fact that you went down was not a surprise to me at all. It always does. I can't say, you know, with any guarantee it always flies by, you know, X number of percent for all the groups. But that really was not something that surprised me all that much. If they have that total number, there's always a little bit of sticker shock there, you know, whether it's 30 million, 50 million, 100 million, 150 million. More people see total costs, there's always a little bit of sticker shock, which makes the, the base plan question decline relative to this a little bit. And once we actually attach what the specific taxpayer cost is to that total cost, it will always drop a little bit as well. So, long answer to this question, but no, I didn't take much away from the decline for one question from this question to this one.
Okay.
Other questions? Are we okay to move on?
Rob, so what is, as your, you know, this is your area of expertise, how would you advise us to proceed? What's your takeaway?
Yeah, that's the, that's the question.
I told you I was gonna ask.
I know, I know, I know, I know. You did, you warned me. Let, let me answer that with what I was seeing in the comments. What I was seeing in the comments, what, you know, I guess I would sometimes describe it as a, as a spectrum of support. And what I mean by that is, some people are all in, you know, you could, you could ask some people for 100% more and they would give you 300% more. Cost is not an answer to this, I suppose. On the other end of that spectrum, three is too much money. In the middle, you know, the, the support is, it, it is a spectrum, you know, as, as things get cheaper and cheaper, support tends to increase. That's typically what I see in the comments. What I was seeing in your comments, while present, it was more so. What I was seeing in your comments, while present, it was more so a little bit more yes or no. It was more, yes, I'm going to support this, or it was, no, I'm not ready to support this at this time because I need some time to understand what my tax impacts are going to be for the operational referendum that was recently passed. So I need time to understand what that's going to look like next year. I need to understand what my property values are going to look like based on the type of land I own and how much land I own. So what I wasn't seeing is this specific plan was way too expensive. It was there, but it was more so, I'm not quite ready to support any plan yet until I can see how this shakes out over the next, well, eleven to thirteen months of my life. So I'll stop nodding your question and say here that if I were in your chair right now, I would probably wait a little bit. I don't think this is ready to come out of the oven for April. I would probably slow down a little bit and not put something facilities focused on your referendum in April. The other reason I say that, not only because your non-parents, non-staff need some time to figure out what's going to happen with the operational referendum and they want to pass the breaks, but because your staff support is high compared to your other groups, it is low relative to other districts. And so I'm not quite sure what the answer to that part is. But clearly, your staff aren't as fully on board as what I typically see. And so I think they need some time to understand why it is you're doing what you are in certain buildings. And so that support goes off to bigger bases of investors. And we've talked about this too as a core theme. More so even than Steve, you know, they're the ones that are going to get asked to pull this office at the grocery store, you know, at the concession stand and the basketball game. They're the ones that get asked about this. So when their support is a little bit lower than normal, everybody else's support is going to be a little bit lower than all that as well. So I wouldn't expect to see a great deal more support from their numbers if they see. So I'd wait, if I were you, that's my answer.
Thank you, Rob.
Well, I would just say in my past life, doing this full-time, these are numbers you can't make better in a short period of time because of the population dynamics in particular. But these numbers may get better over a longer period of time when you have, when people are allowed to settle in to what the impact of the operating referendum looks like for their household. And why, and we can educate the community a little bit more thoroughly on why these projects are important. But between now and April, these numbers very well could get worse. I mean, this could be the kind of question that the more you ask people about it, the more you educate people about it, it gets worse. And so I agree with Rob that it's probably one of those instances in which we have to take a year and come up with a strategy about how we use that year to make April of the following year a winner.
Procedurally, you know, if we tap the brakes on this and it's something that we want to pursue in April, for April twenty twenty-four ballot, is that done without a survey at that point? Is that, you know, read the room? Do you come back with another survey? How do we go about that?
I would suggest that they survey again because obviously our ask might be different based upon what we know now. But I think we've heard from the electorate that maybe this isn't where we want to be in terms of the overall design. And allow the facilities steering committee to continue doing their good work. Maybe come back to another survey.
One of the biggest, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to mention, and maybe it's not April of twenty twenty-four, but it's November of twenty twenty-four because you have a larger turnout, people who tend to be a little more engaged.
Yeah, so one of the comments that I saw over and over and over was that we just spent so much on the PC ten years ago. We just spent so much on PC ten years ago, you should have had more insight. And the funny part is, none of us were on the board ten years ago. Like, none of those people were here. When we came, like, when I got on the board, all we did was put out fires. There was never any, like, think forward. It was always just putting out fires. And so I think we need to do a little bit of education on, yes, we put a lot of money into the PC, but explaining more about what we're going to do with that building because that was the one thing I saw over and over and over.
I think that's a really good point because a lot of people probably don't understand that, first of all, attaching to a building that's settled might not be the best structural idea. But also, we're kind of stuck with that building and we're stuck with maintaining it because it's now on the register of historic places.
And I think some history about what that referendum, because that was up for vote, whether they were going to tear it down or build new. You know, that referendum, how that turned out, you know, that we are doing strategic planning now and all of those things that didn't happen. I mean, and it was actually over ten years ago because I've been here ten years and I was not informed. So it's been quite a while.
I was just gonna say, when we re-commune the facilities committee, they did a fantastic job. They were very engaging with people, but maybe broaden it a tiny bit more to include some more of our sixty-five plus, you know, community members and see if there's more teachers that want to be a part of it. I know that you did have many conversations with the teachers, but maybe they're more a part of that conversation if there's one from each of schools. But then the word spreads a little bit more too.
I agree. It would benefit from more diverse representation of the community group.
I mean, I think the facilities group is, even going back five and six years, is a terrific tool, as everyone has said. You know, one of the things that we might think about is doing some additional research right away while this is in people's minds. And I don't think we have to hesitate to take the form of a survey, but we could do focus groups within, even within the facilities group and sort of get their, because part of me, you know, I know that we sort of framed the problem, but we didn't test messages. So I think we've, you know, I think before we go blasting off with, you know, a campaign, I know Adam will agree with me, at least I think he will, between now and the end of the summer, we sort of have to get our arms around, you know, what are the best ways to message this? You know, what are the best, how is the best way to talk the clearest, the most concise, the most persuasive way to talk about why this is needed, right? So, and I think we can engage the facilities group in that effort as well.
Could you use that focus group to kind of test different ideas as well as opposed to just sticking with what's there now?
Yeah, so you can, there's this big debate in research, whether you do unravel. Rob will understand this. Whether you do a focus group first to inform a survey or you do a survey first to inform a focus group. And we've got a focus, we've got a survey. So we could very easily write a questionnaire and have, you know, three or four, three or four groups of eight or twelve, eight, ten, twelve people and really try to plumb the depths with those, with hopes in the facilities group. Maybe we want to broaden the group, as others have said. But I think that would be a great, a great next step, there's certainly others, but that would be one.
So Rob, I hear you. You know, you don't think that the numbers would improve from where we're at. But I would tend to disagree with that. I think to Leah's point, I think more education just on all of these. You know, you cover the positive parts of the base plan, but then, you know, explain to the village, if we don't have a pool, what are we going to do? What do we have? You know, if we don't do a gym, you know, we talked about one of our colleagues here talked about, you know, we no longer want to be a foreign team. We have to do something, like, we have to get current with other people and bank account. You know, outdoor athletics, how much longer are we going to put money into the track? Like, you know, I just think more education to the general public would be beneficial. And I think tomorrow, we're going to see quite a bit of that.
Jim, I don't disagree. But Rob, can you, when you talked the other day, you said about how people who are not sure or indicate that they need more information tend to move to the negative versus the positive. Can you just share that with everyone?
Yeah, so let me talk what I would have told you six months ago and then what I'm going to tell you now. So over the last few years, the people that are undecided, about two-thirds of them will break toward no, about one-third of them will break toward yes. So I guess bear that in mind that if you're unsure, more towards no than yes. What we have learned though, more recently, especially over the last couple of elections, like, I'll be keeping an eye on, is our models have actually been more correct before we bring over those one-third of people who lean towards yes. So I'm not quite ready to say what that new number is. I don't know if seventy-five percent of not sure are more willing to go, eighty, eighty-five percent. But I will say that it seems to be more recently, more than two-thirds of the unsure will go towards no. You know, more than fifty percent or more than sixty, more than two-thirds, less than a hundred percent. But certainly, if I'm unsure, I'm more likely to say no than no.
And Rob, there may be a statistical reason for it that I can't get my hands around, but there's a population reason for that. I mean, there's, I mean, typically, the unsures break the way that the other folks have.
You didn't tell me it was a follow-up there.
No, that's better. I was just wanting to check out. I mean, so there might be a statistical reason for that, but the sort of the classical reason for where the not sure, the not sure's break is based on the balance of the survey. So if I've got seventy-five percent of the folks approving of the survey and twenty-five disapproving, then I can, then it might break, it might break that way. The bad news, the thing that we've got, that we've got sort of arguing against that now is that we've got this disproportionate weighting that needs to be done, that needs to be done on anything like that. So it's not a pure break because once it breaks, then we have to re-weight it, right? And it's, right now, it's weighted, it's weighted in a way that gets us at best to forty-five, to forty-five percent.
One of my favorite lines in any movie is in Dumb and Dumber. Jim Carrey asks a girl out, she says, "Not in this lifetime." And his response is, "You mean there's a chance?" So I looked at the data, the last time we did our operational referendum, and the data said that we were somewhere in about fifty-three percent. We ended up with the help of our teachers and other staff members getting to sixty-five percent. Is there a chance that there might be some opportunity to break this down and chunk it? We look to some of the facility needs, either with the base plan or the athletic plan. Again, I just put this out there because I think when we ask that question tomorrow night, I think we should be prepared to kind of consider it.
I mean, I think that could be true. I mean, if you're comparing it to the operational referendum, it was a lot less money and a lot less tax impact. So, I mean, this is substantial.
I think it was that way too. I could be wrong about this, but I think it was that way too, not as much a margin. But when we did the survey for the high school, thirty-eight point five million, I think we were somewhere hovering at about fifty-two, fifty-three percent. And we ended up selling the referendum at a fifty-nine and a half percent passage rate. So I'm just wondering, is there a chance to educate on a smaller portion of the overall project and do this evolutionarily, not revolutionarily? Slowly chip away.
I think that was the kind of the thought behind the starting of the high school and getting some improvements there for classrooms and.
Yeah, I think that's a great, that's a fair, it's a fair idea. And it's one that I think should be informed by some kind of research. Obviously, it can be informed with need, as Jim has said. I respect that a lot. But we've got to continue to, we've got to continue to inform this stuff by research or with research. And it's actually, we're at a stage now where that actually can be done reasonably, easily. It's like, you know, it's a Saturday afternoon writing the script and then just working to get groups scheduled and we're ready to go. And those are fun because those are discussions and other people can sort of sit around and listen. And, I mean, it's, they can be a lot of fun. No beer, but they can be a lot of, they can be a lot of fun.
Steve, logistically, what is the timeline for April, November twenty-three, April of twenty-four?
Great, great question. So if the board were to move on something here for April of twenty twenty-three, it'd have to have a resolution passed, I believe, on or around January the twenty-eighth. If they wanted to look at a November twenty twenty-three, we'd be out of luck because there's no November election this year. However, April twenty twenty-four would be primary, excuse me, would be general election and primaries for presidential that the question could be raised then or where you see your greatest turnout. And dare I say, oftentimes, your most support for public education is around a gubernatorial or presidential election. So November twenty twenty-four. Would that be your assessment too, Rob and Matt?
Oh, I think when you're ready is the best time to go, which I recognize is really uncraditing. Plus, when you have every answer, answer that people could have, whether that's April or whether it's November, I have to more stock in that than I do on turnout.
Yeah, I would agree with Rob. I think historically, data suggests that the gubernatorial and presidential are better statistically. But at the same time, there are still referendums that aren't successful on those days. So it's not like that is the perfect pill you take and pass a referendum. It's still about finding alignment with your community on what projects they agree should be implemented. And then somehow, if possible, finding the sweet spot for cost and tax impact that aligns with those projects. We fail referendums with no tax impact if the solution isn't right. So the key is to make sure that both of those things align. What does the community believe is the right answer? And I think your case has been the longstanding question of what is the right answer for the ELC? That's been a conversation that's been going on ten years. And then when the right, quote-unquote, right answer is found, does the cost and tax impact associated with that right answer align with community sentiment? So there is no perfect time. It's the time, as Rob said, you go when you're ready and the community is supportive of the solution, the cost and the tax impact that you're proposing. And that could be April twenty-four, it could be November twenty-four. I hate to say it could be beyond that, it's hard to say. But those feel like the two most viable and only options to consider right now, unless the board has some sentiment to really scale this back for something in April. And you couldn't be doing that with data. You'd be doing it on your opinion of what has a chance of passing.
Jessica. I agree with what Matt just said and what Rob said earlier, that whatever we should do should be informed by what our community is telling us. I would have a hard time, and I like the idea of separating out, that's fine. But I would have a hard time not addressing our educational needs first, what needs to happen with the ELC before we start dealing with that. Not that academics, or excuse me, the athletics aren't important and don't enhance our academics. It's sort of like when we did the operational referendum, we had to get to the base plan first before we moved on to the others. But in that regard, I also think that if we're going to do it in a staged approach, the community needs to know that so that we don't say, how about this, how about this, how about this? That they know, okay, this is the first of three or the first of whatever, so that there is a clear plan of this is what we have to address.
There has to be more regular routine communication somehow about ongoing needs, whether it's, yeah. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I think that we just have to take the next year and figure that out and make sure that the community, you know, get a balance, like, being aspirational with being honest about. like being aspirational with being honest about where deficiencies are. I think we've heard from the, from the facilities committee about vision and, and, you know, telling the story and, and I think all those things need to, we need to figure out how to get into all those things to move us forward. I had started to go down that path, Jessica, too, of how do you stage it and even wondering if, and I don't, I don't know if this is even possible, but can you schedule or, or write a referendum question that is staged to say in year one it'll be this, in year two, and three, or is it just one amount that you typically ask for?
You can stage a question as saying, "Year one, we'll borrow X, year two, we'll borrow Y over a 22-year period." I think that was actually one of the questions in the, in the document we had here. It'd have to be towards a total project, so it couldn't be loose in terms of the project itself.
So there, there, I don't need to prolong the discussion necessarily, but this, this idea of breaking things apart and having part number one, part number two, part number three, part number four, there, there are some very strong arguments for doing that. There are actually some very strong arguments for not doing it that way because you better not be the one who really, really, really loves Project Four. And because by that stage of the game, the community could have gotten awfully tired of, of us, of us going to them every, every year, every six months. So we've got to be, we've got to think that through, we've got to ask, we've got to put that on the questionnaire for the, for our focus group to see what our, our community thinks about, about, about that.
And to that point with staging, like you would have to think about other things that crop up that don't fit within Dave's budget, like a roof. I mean, I know that, you know, there's going to be roof replacements that are going to need to happen in the next five, 10 years. It's just going to happen, it always happens. There were roofs, that's what happens to roofs. And they're flat, so you're going to have to replace them. So I, I think it needs to be really well thought out. Back to the point about communication, and maybe I'm too close to the issue, but if people don't understand that things are not great at the ELC by now, how many times have we done this survey? Or we've said, "What should we do with the ELC? We did that twice and then now we're like, we gotta do something with the ELC." And here it is, third time. People must know, I mean, the community must know that the ELC is not great.
I made some comments like that at the, at the facility meeting about how like, you know, part of when we did the high, because they were like, "Well, we just did the high school," and I was like, "Yes," and part of that was the next steps would be, and half the people in there, I swear, they lived in my heart for the last three years. Like they're all, I would love to see like longevity in town because half the people had no idea, well, they knew we did a referendum but had no idea like.
What the survey.
Yeah, they didn't have any history, no context, no anything. And I think also, you know, they're not, they're not in it every day. They don't, if you don't have kids in school, you're like, "Oh yeah, they asked me about that, that was a while ago." They probably fixed it by now, like, you know, like, they, they don't know. They don't know, they have no idea.
I think it's, it's education, but it, but there's also a selling component too that we're clearly not, and I realize this wasn't, this survey wasn't going to, to sell the project necessarily, but there's two aspects to it.
Yeah, I mean, echo a little bit what Carly said in the last two comments. I looked at the results on this and I wouldn't say I was encouraged, but I wasn't discouraged given the timing that we're at right now, coming off the operational referendum, in the middle of negotiations with teachers about contracts, uncertainty in the economy, lack of that bill hitting home for people. I read through a lot of the comments, too, this is all what I expected to see, not surprises there. But also, you know, your comment about not selling it, I mean, we laid this out there very miltoast and said, "Here are some ideas, what do you think of them?" And I think what I come back to is hearing what I heard a lot at the Facility Steering Committee, what I heard a lot from people who showed up at the meetings of, "Where's the bigger vision on it?" We didn't create a narrative around this, we wanted to just lay it out there and see what people thought of these projects. To see 42 to 41, you know, percent on that of people being open to that without having any narrative, without having much understanding, is the reason I actually thought that that was pretty decent given the circumstances.
So when we did the Facility Steering Committee the last time around and Matt and mine might have been part of that too, I can't recall, but it was a bit of a longer process, a little more drawn out, and we, we kind of with the committee narrowed the project, right? So we kind of looked at, if we could have anything that we wanted, anything, what would we want? And it was like, oh, we want this, that, and the other thing. And, you know, of course, a pool was in there and a, you know, a separate gymnastics gym and a field house and there was, I mean, it was expanded music, I mean, it was everything. It was literally everything you could want. And then we kind of took a step back and said, "Okay, what do we think we could actually get past?" Because, and Matt, maybe you remember what that number was, I don't, it was a large number.
120 million.
Okay, you remember the number, nice. 120 million.
Yeah, that was, that was a very different survey we wrote at that time, too. It was more about, here, all of the needs across the district, ask community members to prioritize what they felt were the most pressing needs, and then ask them how much they would be willing to support in, in terms of a tax increase, which obviously connected with a dollar bump. And then we built a solution after the survey. We didn't really have a solution going into the survey other than, I think half, some of the people in the rooms that go for it all, right? They were in the $120 million camp, as Rob described before, right? They'll support anything, doesn't matter. Those, there were those that were concerned about tax impact and cost, as, as I think we all, almost people do. So we ended up following, I was just trying to look quickly as, as what the last referendum was, seeing right, having it off the top of his head.
38. 38.5 million.
Great, thank you. 38 and a half million, yeah, from 2017. So we're, we're basically six years, only six years, in a way, when you think about an out from that last effort and you've passed your operating referendum, which is huge in terms of sustainability of the district, in terms of educational programs and things you can operate, I think it's really impossible to talk about facilities if you don't have that house in order. So the positive is that we have what some districts find to be the bigger hurdle to clear, being operational. It can tax for a period of time. And the question is, how do we continue to have conversations with the community potentially at a broader level beyond our committee? As, as was noted earlier, our committee was pretty connected with the newer community members. I think generally balanced, so I think that tends to sway the, the attitudes and opinions and demeanor of that group to be more supportive than the broader public is. And I think the conversation has to be around, do we, and obviously the ELC is the big question here, is, is do we continue down this path of a new ELC or is there something else that the community would have the appetite to support a, a cap referendum for?
Well, I'm hearing consensus on one thing is maybe we could, we need to slow down the process and maybe we need not be considering a referendum for April of this year, but maybe to, I'm hearing consensus amongst the board that this is an opportunity to regroup, revisit, broaden our base of support. You may remember how we got this Facility Steering Committee was just opening the door to anybody who wanted to be a part of it, staff, parents, community members and the like. And we ended up having about 40, 45 people, I think, pretty consistently attend those meetings. But maybe I'm hearing consensus is, let's, let's take this out another step. How fortunate we are to have a partnership with Bray Architects as well as School Perceptions that can help us dig in even deeper into this data to inform what we'll do with this Facility Steering Committee moving forward as well. Certainly, if Dr. Rob, Matt, Ryan, if there's anything that we would ask, maybe we can continue to keep the conversation open with you about taking us to the next level with our work.
Hey, Rob, great job.
Rob, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I think the only thing I would say is you're, you're not alone in terms of being in a position where cost and tax impact may be a little further ahead in terms of where your community support is. And that has been compounded over the last three years with the construction industry, construction industry impacts that we've been seeing, that, you know, a project that would have been, make up a number, you know, 50 million is now 63 million. That's a big difference to community members, it's a big difference to the actual tax impact. And so that, that timing also hurt potentially in terms of this what we'll ask, we needed to put forward to address the needs you have. The next year will probably give us a little better sense of where the, the industry's heading and whether things start to, to tamper down a little bit and return to, they're not going to hurt where they were, but they, they may normalize a little bit. And that may give you an opportunity to not take on as much inflation as some may be concerned about if we continue to wait.
Well, on behalf of the board, I'd like to extend our gratitude to all three of you and appreciate your continued partnership moving forward. Onward, onward.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Keep it in mind till we're out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think we, we need to take into consideration what, what Matt just said, too.
I mean, the longer we wait, this isn't going to get cheaper. You know, you, you just said, Diana, the last, you know, everything that we have giggled about it is 120. We have four things that are 115. You know, so the further we push this out, that, that track, that football field turf, that instead of 3 million, that's going to be 4.5, you know, up the pool instead of whatever.
20?
23, it's going to be 32, you know, so I just think time is money here and I, I was actually somewhat encouraged by the, by the results. I, I wasn't turned off, I, I think with, with some, with some education, I think the community would be.
I think Rob had a great point. We'll just get some more data and do some focus groups, I think focus groups are a great idea and see what we can do to message and see what, what will work. Other thoughts?
I agree. Let's dig in a little bit more, learn some more information so we can plan better for the next three questions.
I have to do more of all than I have in a facility.
Great. Did you write his name down?
I did in big bold letters. H.I.S.
Stephen, it's 844.
Perfect reference. Thank you to everyone who's been a part of that. I know many of you have been a lot of nights out, so thank you. I think you had something you wanted to say.
I was just going to ask in general.
I almost called on you, but I wasn't sure if I should.
I was just going to ask. I know we mentioned in like the slideshow and the survey how there was like a lot of decaying resources at the IC, including like our security and our, like being up to code with things we could follow. Are those things to be addressed like immediately in like the next couple of years, except when we can't push them off until a later date? Or are they more of a thing that we can kind of sit back and wait on those like the rest of ours?
Great question. We have what's called a five, a 10, and a 15-year plan. Many of those items are quite costly and wouldn't be, will be covered in our whole budget. Suffice to say, these are the kinds of things that help us kind of reassign whether or not something should be on the 10-year plan or the five-year plan. I think you're probably talking about some of the work that Dave's got on, what is it? HIC, HIC is the, is the big thing at the IC.
Yeah. Thank you. Is he going to start everything? I'm going to need you.
My question is why are those too flat? And.
Just so we know it works. All right, moving on to the citizens' comments. I'm going to use citizens' comments. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. My partner in crime over here helping me out.
Always, always trying to try to support.
And allow me to acknowledge Jeff Shields, who's in the audience as well. Jeff has just been a wonderful part of the Facility Steering Committee. Thank you so much for all that you've done and will continue to do, no doubt.
Definitely.
Thanks for being here, Stephen.
I'm, I was.
Okay, you're a citizen, you're a citizen's comment.
So seeing everything based on the survey, I was, at first I was a little, I was a little frustrated by it. It was, you know, we put in this time and energy into, you know, coming up with some ideas and I feel like we, we missed it on a, a bunch of the things. So, and I'm not, it was a great experience, I, you know, I was telling someone before, it's like going into those meetings I had, you know, like this is my vision for the PC or whatever, and then just gets blown up because you get the administration's point of view, which, I'm not administration, you know, you don't, you don't think about just different aspects that go into everything. But the, the thing that was the most frustrating for me was, I feel like we nailed it on a few things, I feel like we missed it on a bunch, and then there was talk about like, what's the district's plan for 25 years, for 50 years? And it was brought up a couple of times and I feel like then we just, like, is that another? Do we need to have another committee that concentrates on that? I know you guys need more committees to be a part of, but I, you know, even, even for me, the middle school one was super frustrating because I just felt like the reason I, I was in these meetings was I just, I heard from multiple people was, "I'm sick of getting referendum," you know? It's like, and I get it, I get the operational referendum, everything's gone up, I, I, I get everything, but people don't want to be referendum every two years, you know? Like if we can, if we can put something off on a bigger scale, like, then this, if you weren't in these meetings, we talked about this, like a new high school, yeah, maybe in 25 years or 15 years, but obviously we need to talk about getting some land, you know? We, I feel like our vision was like, let's talk about in the next five years, which we need to, but let's not kibosh, you know, 25, 50 years. It, it, something has to, I mean, my kids will be gone by then, so you're probably like, why does he care? It's like, because I don't want to throw money at something now that we don't necessarily need, that could, you know, we're, we're throwing money at stuff now that's not, not the answer. But that being said, it was a great experience and I hope you welcome me back and I'll just keep talking.
Thank you.
Can I say what I've heard about the, so for like the ELC improve, I'm not on the committee, but for the ELC improvement, I heard more people say things like, "Yeah, that needs to be changed." But the part I kept hearing was like, if we do all of these big projects with all of these facilities, we're spending so much money on athletics, then we have to maintain them. It ends up being like a compounding cost. So I think there, if that's what you want, you need to think about educating people on that because it's also, it's not just the building, it's the maintaining it. It's the money to pay people to clean it. We don't even have enough janitors to clean the IC right now, like that kind of stuff. So I just, that's just another thing to think about.
Yeah, there's death, taxes, and we can add maintenance to everything, like roofs, you know? People, people don't understand that in addition, like we need money for a roof after 15, 20 years. They're like, "Well, we just built that school." Well, that school's 25 years old. I mean, you, you don't do that at your house at home, you know? It's, there's maintenance, so that's part of it.
Thank you. Other citizens' comments?
And I'll be quiet now.
You're good. Okay, we will move on to future items, which are listed. As always, please feel free to submit any ideas. 10, schedule of next meetings, anything of note other than tomorrow night?
Just that the, the location changed.
Yeah, okay. And we'll move to 11. Contemplate possession to consider employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any employee over which the government will evaluate his jurisdiction or exercises. of any employee over which the government will buy jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
Down here.
Also by Leah, seconded by Rob, so we will, I'll press again.
Yeah.
Rob.
Hi.
Leah.
Yes.
Yes.
Early, yes.
Yes.
And I'm also, yes, in 3 minutes.
So one of the things that I would.
You see, uh, he's not.
Thanks for being here.